All right, can you please rise? And we're gonna have our new police chief, Eric Dangler, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, November 26, 2024. It's a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session. We were discussing a cell tower amended agreement. The first item on the agenda is a resolution considering a renewal of a communications site lease agreement between the Village of Rybrook and SBA Steel LLC.
Whereas on December 13, 2005, Rybrook Board of Trustees held a public hearing and approved the site plan application with Nextel New York, doing business as Nextel Communications, to construct a 120-foot monopole at Village Hall property at 938 King Street with an equipment building at its base. And whereas on December 13, 2005, the Village of Rybrook negotiated an agreement and approved a 20-year communications site lease agreement with Nextel Communications, ending July 19, 2026. And whereas on October 15, 2014, SBA Steel LLC became the newly named owner of wireless telecommunications facility. And whereas the existing communications site lease agreement expires on July 19, 2026. And whereas SBA Steel has reached out to the Village of Rybrook with interest to amend or renew the communications site lease agreement. And whereas the Village of Rybrook wishes to enter into amendment of the communications site lease agreement with SBA Steel. And whereas under the terms of the proposed site lease renewal agreement, SBA Steel would continue to lease the wireless communications facility effective July 20, 2026, until July 19, 2051, with a renewal term every five years that is automatic unless SBA Steel notifies the Village of Rybrook of their intention to withdraw from the agreement. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the amendment of the communications site lease agreement between the Village of Rybrook and SBA Steel effective July 20, 2026, with a renewal term of every five years that is automatic unless SBA Steel notifies the Village of their intention to withdraw up to a total of 25 years through July 19, 2051, subject to modification by council. And be further resolved that the mayor administrator authorized to sign and execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Is that moved?
This is an ongoing, I mean, we've had this agreement in place for a long time. We're very happy to have it being continued.
Absolutely. And it's the same terms, and we could say it's a 4% escalation per year. It's a great alternative revenue source to offset property taxes. And you may ask, why are we doing it now for something expires, doesn't expire till middle of next year? And the reason is, SBA Steel has to have long-term contracts with the carriers that are on the pole. So that's why they are always interested in having an agreement in place. It's tough to go out and negotiate new contracts with the companies on the pole if they don't have a long-term agreement in place.
Thank you, Chris. And I certainly do not plan on still being on this day, as the next time this contract comes up. I don't think any of us would willingly be so. Any questions or comments? All right. Chris has to call the roll this time.
We should also mention, there's some language changes and improvements that council put in. Thank you, Ralph.
You're welcome.
To also talk about, a little bit more about the tax issues, should it become tax since, should the town propose it to be a taxable property? Also some additional language about site improvements and things like that in terms of maintenance. So just want to thank council for all his efforts on that end.
Yes, thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number two, considering support of continued and increased state aid for local governments.
Whereas until 2024, cities, villages, and towns have not received an increase in unrestricted state aid or AIM funding in 15 years, significantly impacting their ability to provide essential services to the residents. And whereas after a prolonged period without financial support, local governments finally received an increase of $50 million in unrestricted state aid in 2024. And whereas local officials expressed their gratitude for the $50 million increase in unrestricted state aid, recognizing it as a positive step towards addressing longstanding funding challenges. And whereas the state has referred to this new aid as temporary municipal assistance, suggesting that such increase may not continue, jeopardizing the sustainability of crucial municipal programs and services. And whereas the property tax cap further limits the ability of local governments to properly fund the programs and services to their residents. And whereas increased and ongoing state aid for local governments is vital in maintaining infrastructure, public safety, and housing, and other municipal services. And whereas the challenges of inflation, cost of labor and supplies, and the end of extraordinary federal aid only accentuate the need for consistent predictable funding to effectively plan for the future and meet the growing needs of their residents. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook calls upon the governor and state legislature to commit to continuing the additional $50 million in unrestricted state aid in the upcoming state budget and beyond. And be further resolved that Rybrook urges state officials to recognize the need for a long-term plan that ensures consistent and predictable increases in financial support for local governments that keep pace with inflation. And be further resolved that a copy of the resolution should be sent to the governor, Senate Majority Leader, Assembly Speaker, Senator Shelley Meyer, Mayor, Assemblyman Steve Otis, and the New York State Conference of Mayors. And I see there's a spelling error on Senator Mayor's first name. That'll be corrected.
Thank you, yeah, if we can correct that before it gets sent.
Yes.
You know, as we talk about every March, when we're in budget season, you know, we do have the tax cap that was put on by the state, promising relief on unfunded mandates. We have not seen that relief. And given that, you know, municipal aid has not increased in the 15 years, it's, you know, again, this is very, a step in a positive direction that we're seeing from the state. It doesn't get close to what we need in terms of increases for all of the municipalities on which this artificial tax cap is placed. But it's certainly a step in the right direction, and we appreciate the state putting it there. But certainly would ask that it not be temporary and that it become permanent, and even show percentage increases each year.
And NICOM has requested that all the municipalities in the state submit this resolution for consideration by the state.
Right, and we're certainly willing to do our part in passing this resolution. Any questions or comments?
Any chance with a good possibility of a political primary for governorship that we could try to undo the tax cap?
That's a good question. I mean, it's, you know, I have to imagine that it would be tough for a candidate to say, hey, I want to release the restrictions that are keeping your taxes down, but certainly those in the know, you know, I mean, it puts an undue burden on the municipalities, and it's on the school districts as well, correct?
Correct.
And it hits everybody.
Yeah.
I know that there's one municipality, I don't want to misspeak, but I think it's pleasant, though, I think, is tonight is holding a public hearing as well in order to override the tax cap, because they have a budget that's going to be in excess of it. So, you know, they're having that conversation tonight, and it may be, I haven't looked at the figures, but it may be a minimal amount that they're going over the tax cap. But to have to go through these steps, it certainly makes a municipality look bad when you're not getting the aid from the state that was promised with the tax cap. But it would be interesting to see if there was a candidate for governor willing to remove the tax cap.
Or at least give us the aid that was promised.
Right, right, or the mandate relief or additional state aid.
Yeah, and we take the mandate relief. I mean, this state aid is so minimal for us. Some communities get a lot. You know, if you're a large city, you're getting millions of dollars in AIM funding. We get $45,000, you know, and change. It's just not a lot of money.
It's not equitable.
Don't get me wrong, it's helpful, but it's not equitable with other, some of the other communities. Even small cities get over a million dollars, just because they're cities.
Cities, right.
Yeah, so it's not a lot of money, but well, you know, it still does offset some of our property taxes.
So it's really a technicality, like what they're called? I mean, why is a city a city versus a village?
Yeah, that's, well, that's another, whole nother discussion, but you're right. There are cities that should be villages, and villages that should be cities.
It's really arbitrary. So then maybe seeing, letting them know where the inequity sits.
They do.
They know.
They know.
Well, make it more public.
But even $45,000 is better than a sharp stick for the eyes, so.
It is.
Ouch.
And I'm not sure we have a motion in a second. If we do, would you mind doing that again?
Oh, can I get a motion in second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, we kind of just jumped into that conversation there. My bad.
That's okay.
My bad. Any other questions or comments about letting, about passing this resolution in support of the continued increased aid?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report. I think that's the quickest we've ever gotten to an administrator.
There's only two things on the agenda.
I know.
Well, we've got other items, but.
So much, we have other things to discuss, but that's the quickest we've gotten to an administrator's report.
Yeah.
In my nearly 12 years on this board.
So because I knew it was a relatively light agenda, I wanted to kind of go through where we are, because we've got a lot of grants we're managing. And I want to make sure that everyone's familiar with what we have in terms of funding, what programs we have. And we have a spreadsheet that we kind of follow as we're going through this process that kind of highlights, and it's online too, if any residents want to see it, but, you know, what the grant sources are, what the purpose is, total project costs, total village costs, so people can see what's going on. But let's just kind of go through that. Everybody's aware of the NRCS Recovery Buyout, oops, sorry, the NRCS Recovery Buyout Program, and that's a $28.6 million grant that we have that we're working through. And again, no village contribution on that. We currently have, I think, five homes that have closed, and there are like three more in the way. We have the Municipal Food Scraps Recycling Initiative, which I'm going to talk about separately, if you don't mind. That's a grant for $29,900, and the village cost is only basically $3,700. Westchester County, we're working with them on the Level 2 EV chargers, and that's still moving very slowly, but, you know, they really are looking to gear up more next year. Avon Circle is the Avon Circle, and Portchester Middle School studied to do a benefit cost analysis for the flood mitigation project. And the goal there is to get this project done and completed in a month's time, so that we can then make that, that's going to be necessary for a BRIC application, which is something that we've fallen short, is needing a BCA analysis, so this will allow us to do that. That's a grant for $110,000, and there's no contribution, actually can go up to 200, again, with no contribution.
Is that an acronym, BRIC?
BRIC, yeah. BRIC stands for, oh boy, you're going to call me on that one. I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Acronyms in government.
I know, a lot of acronyms, yeah. You could ask me about RISK, RISK programs, that's another one. That's Resilient Investments Through Support and Capital.
Says it.
Yep. The Brook Lane Project is another project we have $100,000 grant for with no village contribution, again. And that's to do a BCA analysis, land surveying, and to design the stormwater underneath Westchester Avenue. That goal, if members, to reroute our stormwater. Remember, that was something that we did a study of, and that's to reroute it, and this will then allow us to go after funding for that particular project. Basically, it brings it through the design stage, or the, you know, the planning, the initial stage we need to get the grant for the construction. The next one is $110,970. It's listed as a village cost of the same, but there's no village cost to this, and that's to fund a Rich Manor Park flood study. There's been a lot of discussion over the years, saying, we did improvements from, as a result of the 2000 study that Delfro Fed's office did in early 2000s. We've implemented all the projects, there's still some flooding in that area. What else can we do? So that's what this is doing. They're looking at this, they're also going to do a BCA analysis, I believe, and this will allow us to say, okay, what other improvements could we make, both in Rich Manor Park, or maybe even just a little south of there, to help mitigate some of the flooding that still happens?
And that study is going on right now?
That started. Yep, it started. In fact, they were in the field today.
Oh.
Yeah, taking measurements, they were taking measurements in the rain, from, basically starting up at Bluebird Hollow, the detention basin, the Edgewood Basin, going south of Rich Manor Park, from there south, just past Rich Manor Park. And that's something I think the residents would be interested to know more about, because they've said, you know, why don't we go back and re-study? What else can we do? You know, people talk about even.
People stop me all the time. What are we doing about this?
Yep.
Well, you can tell them.
We're doing a study.
When they're, they're going to come up with three or four different alternatives, to say, things that we could do to potentially help, if they can come up with that. And I know people said over the years, we know the answer on this, but unfortunately, but it's, you know, people, they're going to address even the dredging of the brook and why that doesn't, that's a problem. I'm assuming that's what they're going to say, but we'll wait and find out. Dredging of brooks isn't usually the best way to go about it. You don't gain storage. But they're going to look at that, but they're going to look at all different, from big projects to small projects in there. We said, keep an open mind, look at any alternative, so the board can then look at the all different alternatives and see if that's something that the community might be interested in. The next one is one of the few that has a village contribution, and that's the sewer projects. That was the grant that we got from the federal government, but that money is actually money we are already going to allocate in our budget. It's actually already allocated. So that's wonderful to get a million dollars for sewer improvements and not have to raise new funds that we didn't already have planned for those improvements. Accra Drive, this is the million dollars also for the failing culvert on Accra Drive, so this is to redo that culvert. That's a big project that's going to be pulling up all the piping and redoing the culvert underneath Accra Drive.
Here on Accra Drive is?
It's right from leaving Rich Manor Park.
Okay.
The, that's, there's two, those two massive pipes that go underneath the road there, and then it goes to daylight on the other side.
I feel like they just ripped those up recently.
No, no, that hasn't been done. Never been done, no. And those pipes are very challenging, because they actually are inverted to create, holding back water into the stormwater, into the flood plain there, so it doesn't flood downstream, too. But it still releases it out, so it gets a little more complicated than it sounds. Tree Inventory, that was a grant also that we received for $50,000 with no village contribution. That's something that'll be helpful for Michael Noack. We have nine new SCBA units coming. Again, no village contribution. Oh, there's a little minor village cost, about $4,200 for an $85,000 of SCBA replacements. Yep. Police Department, LiveScan Equipment, that's another grant, no contribution from the village, but it costs about $23,000 for that portion of it, and that's underway. And lastly, the other one that's still active here is the purchase of tablets and car mounts for our police officers on patrol, and that's a grant of about $50,000 with no contribution. So we've done really well, but just as important, there's some really great projects here that will hopefully help the residents either on flooding or other types of service improvements with really minimal to no cost from the village. So we're very happy with how the grant writers have done a great job helping us, the department heads get on and talk to the grant writers and come up with the projects that we think would, you know, be very helpful for the community.
Thank you, Chris. And I have to say, it's been, they've certainly, you know, I think entering into this agreement to get the grant writers was definitely a great move.
Worth it.
That the village did. But I think, you know, and we certainly thank them for all of the funding that they've helped us identify and go after and receive. This is really helping the village in many, many different ways. But I also want to say thank you to you, Chris, and everyone else involved, because we have to provide information for the grants to be written, and then we have to do all of the follow-up afterwards. And if anyone wants, you know, some light reading, take a look at all the paperwork that Chris has to do for the NRCS grant. So just, you know, to make it clear to, you know, anyone who's listening, you know, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on by village staff. Once we receive the grants, there's a lot of reporting, and we really have to track every expenditure and every cent of this throughout the process. So it's a tremendous amount of work, both on the front end and then once we receive it.
What's nice is the, thank you very much, and it really is a great team effort. If you see, there's grants in every department. The ones that haven't made it on here are the CDBG ones that are going to be, we have applications in force that'll get on the list once we hopefully get approved. But, you know, there's new applications, there's new grants, and it really involves every department. That's what's nice about it. I didn't talk about the food cycler. You mind if I talk about that for a second? So we are about to kick off this food cycler program that the board has endorsed, and that's to purchase these food cyclers at these severely discounted costs. Normal prices, there's something called an ECO 3 and an ECO 5 food cycler. You're going to get a lot of information start to come out as soon as next week, and residents will be able to purchase products that are between $500 and $600 for $65 or $75. So it's a deep discount. It's a way to process your food. A food cycler goes in the kitchen, it'll take out the, I guess, the water there, takes the water out of it and turns it into a different type, a product that could be mixed in with compost or done, put out in gardens. It's not compost, but it's something that you can mix within it, and it doesn't a matter of hours, rather than, you know, the time it takes with a traditional type of compost. So it's a neat thing, and it's a great opportunity. It's going to be only available for a few months, and there's only 100 of them, so we're seeing how this goes, and we're seeing if there's interest. People will be able to go to the link that we're going to send them, and they'll be able to order it directly, and it'll get shipped directly to their house. And the reason the village is able to offer is because this helps offset the cost that it takes the village to, it eliminates waste from going to the county processing center. So it's eliminating waste, which reduces cost for us as well.
Great, thank you.
More information next week.
All right.
Information to come.
Anything else on the administrative report?
Nope.
All right, then let's get to our old.
Winterfest, next.
Yeah, I was going to say Winterfest.
Winterfest, next Friday, December 6. And we're very excited about it, we've got a great day planned. And, yeah, Winterfest is just a great opportunity for everyone in the community to come out and enjoy a night out. We're going to have the ice carvings and a lot of fun activities, and good visits to Santa, and the train rides. It's going to be a lot of fun again this year. That's 6:00 PM on Friday, December 6, always the first Friday of the month in December.
Great, we're very much looking forward to it, and hopefully we get decent weather for it.
Absolutely.
It's been hit or miss on some years.
It's going to be beautiful.
Some years it's been great.
It's not been worse than last year, so we will get lucky.
It'll be beautiful.
All right, so.
It was poor.
The next item on our agenda is a continuation of a conversation that we started at the last meeting. We said we were going to discuss more fully on a, when we had less agenda items, being this meeting, which is a discussion of the day camp and travel camp fees and programs. So I know Chris had provided us with some summaries of not just, you know, what we're charging, what the revenue is, what our expenses are, where we kind of stand, as well as, you know, a breakdown of other communities and what they were charging, as well as reports from, from some of the staff that runs, that run the camps. So we've certainly had a chance to review some of this. I think, you know, based on some discussion, I certainly want to continue this discussion. I'm not sure we will actually reach a decision tonight, but it's certainly something that we want to talk about, to see where we stand in relation to other communities, where we stand on our, you know, profit, you know, loss sheet, and then start to figure out what's the best answer for the Village of Rybrook and the rec department and the residents that use this. So I'll open it up for a caller. You want to go?
Sure. So I did a deep dive into the, what each municipality has, whether it be a day camp and a travel camp, and how they charge for it, how long it goes for, what kind of facility they have, and if they provide refunds, and is there a pool? And it's all over the place, but what I found was that Rybrook is actually really on the low scale of what it charges, and I'm thinking that, based on the comments, that we may want to think about increasing the cost and providing a better option.
So one thing I may ask, Chris, you know, for us to help continue this conversation, is whether we could get updated, because I know the survey for the fees for the municipal camps was from 2023, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
A little outdated. So whether we could circulate among the board just what the current fees, or whether someone could, you know.
Yeah, we'd be happy to.
Be Greg while he's resting.
We'd be happy to update this survey.
I'm sure he wouldn't mind calling around to some of the municipalities and finding out what their 2025.
They don't have that yet.
They may not have it.
No, what they gave me was 2024 numbers, and I anticipate having an increase because the buses cost so much more.
Okay, so we could at least get 24, you know, get the 24 numbers and be able to compare it to what we were at.
For the villages, we should be able to get their 2025s, and the 2024s is coming out very shortly, too, because the budgets are coming out.
The budgets, right, exactly.
So, yeah, for next year.
I was going to say, it is budget season for a lot of the municipalities, you know.
We can get, we can get the numbers.
Especially those that are on the calendar year.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be happy to do that.
Okay, that would certainly help us to see truly where we are. I think, you know, it's certainly very much a valid point that the costs are going up, that we've seen an increase in minimum wage in New York State, we've seen an increase in the busing costs in New York State. That being said, you know, my personal opinion is that, you know, we do subsidize this cost. It's a service we're providing to the residents, you know, and it's, I guess it's a question of how much are we subsidizing? You know, that it's, that there's obviously a fine line, you know, I mean, I don't, I'm, you know, not living, you know, on the hope that we have a free camp for all residents. We have to be able to, you know, at least cover most of our costs. You know, for the public's information, in 2024, the camps combined ran for a deficit of about $54,000. So, you know, that's, that's.
About $25,000 to $29,000 per camp.
Yeah, it was $25,000 in the day camp, $29,000 and change in the travel camp. And so, you know, that's fees that are being absorbed into our budget, into the municipal budget. You know, I also don't see this being a profit venture, I don't see us, and again, we're providing a service for those who either prefer to have the kids closer to home, or, you know, maybe don't have the wherewithal to be able to afford some of the very expensive private day camps that are in our area, or sleepaway camp, which a lot of others go to.
I thought that first one was wrong.
What are kinds of questions?
Yeah, please.
So what are the chances of getting a grant or something to help, you know, is that something that Millennium could look into also?
We can ask them, it's something that's probably a long shot, but they like to fund, you don't find a lot of grants for operational costs, especially if they're, unless there's a, more of a, communities with financial needs, different financial needs than we have. Operational costs, it's easier to get grants for like capital items, or something for the park, or for a one-time purchase for, that would support the, a camp, for instance, than it is to get operational money.
Do we have?
And operational money, you also don't want to create a, if it's only a one-time thing, you don't want to create a budget gap for the next year that you're going to have to fund to continue.
Chris, when do we typically enter into a green, into a contract with a busing company?
We usually, usually we go out to, for, we send out an RFP, and, actually, it's a bid now because of the cost, so we do that before the spring, around springtime.
Gotcha, so it'd be, well, well, I mean, we have to set these rates. When do we see, when do we start advertising? I'm just trying to figure out when the, you know, deadline is for us to decide on camp.
For fees, it's mid-December. You need to make any change by mid-December.
Why do you, why do you have to do that?
To publish the rates in the books that go out, the information that goes out.
What if you don't? Some municipalities do not. What if you wait and just see?
Well, you could, but there's, people do start planning for things, and if you're planning, you just need to know your costs. That's, if you don't, then people just won't know what the costs are when they're, when they're planning what to do in the summer.
It just seems that it's going to be very rushed for us to publish a number when we don't know where we're headed yet.
Just saying, we've done, based on what we've done in the past, we prepared the book for mid-December, you know, mid-December to start to get it ready for for publishing. That's about the, about the last, last time there, but if you want to publish it without the rates, you could do that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess my preference would be to have the rates. Perhaps another piece of information that you could provide to us, Chris, would be just kind of go back the last couple of years for busing costs.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can see generally what they've been and.
That's been the biggest change for us.
Yeah, exactly, and how it's been changing.
It's.
That would be useful information, I think.
Sure. I, the municipalities that I spoke with are wrestling right now with a 3% to 6% increase.
Of of busing costs?
The bus is what they're forecasting, minimum.
It's the drivers. It's a lack of drivers that are out there.
Yeah.
And also last, lack of coach buses. There's school buses you can get people to bid on, but you can't get coach buses these days.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Right, and for the longer trips, they do want coach buses.
Right, the coach buses, yeah.
Of course, that's a balance too, because, you know, you saw in some of the feedback, the longer trips being shorter time at the places. So I know that staff's looking for places that might be a little closer too.
Yeah, please do.
All right, I'm assuming you're here for this conversation. You know, this isn't a public hearing, it's a discussion, but you're certainly welcome to, you know. So if you could just introduce yourself, your address and.
So I'm Jessica Diablo and I am, I'm serving two roles, a teacher, special ed teacher in the school, but I also live here. So I have been involved in the state camp about 17 years now, I want to say. I run the extended school year program that I guess that you guys have been kind enough to have a reciprocity with. So meaning for kids that receive special ed services all year, they get to come to the camp, they attend the camp, and then they come get my services. This summer, I'm in a unique position. My son is not going back to sleepaway camp, we think, my younger one. He wants to be home, therefore entering the town camp with his friends. However, there is one big thing we need to discuss, the location. The location is horrible. I'm not even gonna mix words. It is the only town I know that runs it at a public park. It is not safe. I have people, strangers coming up to my students and children, dogs off leashes, babies toddling over, where's their natties? I have never, in all the towns that I've, and I've worked for many districts in the summer, have seen it at a park. Chaco, Scarsdale, Arnsley, Rock, you name it throughout the schools. I've never seen it at a public park. And I think that is why some people like myself never sat my son and my friends, because I'm like, oh, Mrs. Inky, it's 100 degrees, we're outside of the pavilion. It's pouring rain, we're outside the pavilion. It, there's, there's no safety measures put in place in the location. Weather concerns, there's no facilities. And I understood the school is out of construction. I get it, I lived through that. I moved rooms five times in one year. It was fun. That being said, now we have this beautiful sand yard facility in Rybrook in retreat. And I'm not asking for the whole school, by the way. I've spoken to Colin Burn about it. I've spoken to the board. I've spoken to Lori Bound. I am talking like one little wing, five or six classes. The nurse's office would not be lovely, we have a nurse. Not that's attached, like not a Hilary Kalish in the school, but someone that comes for the summer. And just to have the facilities, because the Rybrook Rec, the after-school, actually uses that during the year. Last summer, we went there for one day. It was torrential rain and the school let us come. It was a world of a difference. So I spoke to many parents, all my neighbors, that attend the town camp, and they agree that the cost is, by the way, extremely low. Like, we're not comparing to Briesmont, where my kids want a Hillary or an Alvin, 10,000. That's not what we're looking for, right? But they're saying, even if we raise the rate, I don't know, 200 or 500, to absorb the cost of actually having it in the school building, where it's air-conditioned, where you have security, where all of these things take place, they would do it. And I've spoken to, I have 20 people on this email chain. They're like, yes, we are real. And more people, I think, would actually, my friends' kids would actually be like, oh, we would sign up for that if it was there. I just didn't want my kid in the public park all day. And they're hot and they're tired. There's nowhere for them to go. We don't even have access to the mansion. So that is why I'm here. And I don't know where to go, because I feel like I'm getting like, the school's like, go to BUR. I just, I don't even know where to start to make this happen. And I brought an amazing mom who could attest to that, that that is what parents want. But I really think we should consider that for this year going forward, because I'm telling every municipality I talked to, has it at a school and never at a park before. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, perhaps when we're updating the fee schedule, we can find out what location they have there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I have a question too. Did we ever look into maybe possibly renting some of the rooms? I know you said that Crawford Park, the mansion is used for other things, but people must rent those or sign up for them. Did we ever look into trying to do that?
They have other, they have other camps and programs that run. It's in the backup. Let me take a quick look who's who's been there recently. Yeah, there's a theater camp that goes and.
Arts and crafts.
For the first five weeks of camps there, they have stuff going on in the, in the mansion. Let me just look. And the man, and the mansion, listen, the benefit of a school is you have a gym, you have classrooms, stuff like that. The mansion doesn't have those kind of playrooms. You know, they've done a great job in the renovation, but it wasn't built for a rec facility.
Right.
Right.
And Crawford, Crawford, that where we have it now, the age group there is what ages again?
The, the day camp, as opposed to.
Kindergarten through fifth grade, sixth grade.
Entering sixth grade.
Okay.
And certainly we have nothing against using the schools. In the past, when we've approached the schools, it was just at a, at a particular cost. And that cost would have to be included into the fee schedule.
And you're saying, you have spoken with how many parents that already send their kids or don't send their kids currently?
If you don't mind, yeah.
Only because other people are gonna watch this.
Hi, I'm Galit Sidilov. I'm a mother of several children here in Rybrook. So my middle son, he was going for a couple of years of Rybrook Day Camp. So for me, that was the same concerns. We basically, we were bound by the cost. We couldn't afford much more expensive stuff. But he's also a special needs child, so he needed his services during the summer. And for me, the biggest worry was that it's a public park. Somebody can come, my child's special needs, he can wander off. Open space, I am not sure what risk assessment was implemented. If it was even done about like what happened if some stranger approaches, what happened if a child runs the wages, bolt off. And another big concern, especially it's more and more now, because it's so hot during the summer. A couple of last summers were extremely hot and that's health risk for young children and for staff at the camp. Because like, okay, counselors, they will run, run for the children. They also have to be in the, in the season and heat. My elder daughter, she was working as a counselor there also. So she was telling me, yes, like she was coming like all red after some of the days because of such a huge heat. So yeah, for me, heat and also rain when they all have to stand in the pavilion, like all kids from as small as my younger daughter, who actually I could see her sending to a camp, but I really hesitate now, hesitant now because of that location. Whether she will be in the camp or I should find some other accommodations for her. Because all kids ranging from five entering kindergarten until almost 12 years old, they have to be in the pavilion if it's, if it's raining or if it's so hot that they cannot be outside in the sun. So that's my biggest concern. And I heard from other parents, they share same sentiments about that. So for me, that's really strange that why we cannot have it in the school? Why, I heard from the school, some know that, okay, but we are using facility for something else we have to prepare. But are we preparing all classroom at once? Can we do some sliding schedule where we're preparing some classrooms or they are blocked off? And some classrooms can be used for kids who are actually in the district. And we as the taxpayers were paying for renovation for the school. So I think we actually deserve to have some benefits for our kids. And we are not saying that it's gonna be for free. I understand it comes with a cost. But I also want some saving and security for my child if I send her there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just.
Can I just make a couple of comments? So I just want to say, we, we do do a survey out to all the users. So it's, because we want to make sure that we're providing a good experience. And I will say, based on the survey results, the people, most, the vast majority that go to the camp do find it a very fun, safe environment. They think they, you know, overall do a good job. And we, but we're always looking for suggestions, right? So the vast, you know, the people said they feel safe. It's a fun environment. It's a nice location. The, the camp counselors do a great job. And, but at the same time, the, the comments are things that could be improved on. The things that you mentioned are some of the biggest concerns. It's the, the heat, not being able to get out of the heat. Rainy weather, you're in the pavilion, it's kind of limiting on what you could do. So there is some, the school could offer some of those improvements if we went there. And we certainly like the school's location as well. We have explored that in the past. Again, the policy decision is it comes with a cost and what those costs should be. And is the, you know, the benefit and the cost worth the, the improvements that comes along with it? And that's really the policy decision that we're going through right now.
Chris, was the survey, did it actually state where parents would prefer to have their children?
Well, we didn't, we didn't have an alternative place to go, but what we do is we have, we have questions that people, what they liked about or didn't like about. And all the survey results are all public. It's right on the backup on the agenda. So everyone can look at it. You know, we got about 48 responses to the survey. We do this after every program. Trustee, so we, we do this after every program. We said, would you like about it? What didn't you like about it? What could we do to improve? Because we're always seeking constant improvement.
And it's something potentially we can look into future. I think, I think, you know, a couple of comments from myself, you know. First off, obviously, we have no control over what the school would charge. That is completely out of our, our jurisdiction. You know, as Chris said, the, the survey responses are overwhelmingly positive. I think the numbers have looked, you know, they're, they're certainly have, at this point, rebounded from from COVID when we couldn't run a camp. It's nice to see the numbers getting back up there. I think we're, we're faced with a dilemma here, because I think there's a lot of information we would like. There's a lot of, you know, variables that would be nice to look into, and yet we have the time.
Can do it.
Which is.
And the other thing that, you know, if, if we had all the time in the world, the other thing I would want to do is refer this to rec committee as well. But I doubt they meet before our next meeting.
You could request a meeting or, or if you, if the board wants to have a special meeting, you could do a joint special meeting. These are all choices that you have.
I, I think you can have a joint special meeting, but I think quite frankly, we have time. It's only November. If you don't publish it, it's okay. You're, 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 that is your, that's really your constraint. That's your only constraint. So if you push it off just a little, and I'm sure that the people that are interested in sending their kids to camp would appreciate the whole idea being vetted in a new way. They would be understanding that the numbers might not be in December and maybe a little later. But I don't know.
I would suggest, can I just give you a suggestion? So if the board, if the board is seriously considering about making changes this year coming up, there's certainly, as, as trustee Epstein said, you could publish in the book saying that the program is considering being revamped and, and more information. I think you just need to provide a deadline that, that response.
Right, I'm just.
But if the board's not really looking to make the changes, it's certainly preferable to have the rates published. So that's the decision you guys can, can weigh back and forth.
And I, and I don't think we're gonna end this conversation tonight. I think we are gonna need a special meeting or be able to make the decision at our next meeting, which I think is December 10th.
It's tight.
Which is tight.
For you guys to come up with and come up with a solution.
Which is tight. I know. It's two weeks essentially. It's. So I'm curi, yeah, I'm curious.
Is there any reason why we can't contact all the parents who have been using the camp? And if we can get the names of prospective parents and let them know what our thought process is and invite them to come to a meeting?
Do that.
I do try, but it was like, I just found out about it last night. It's what he told her. But I, there are many parents.
Not just that, you could use those means, but also remember, we can reach by email anybody who's enrolled in any of our programs. So that would, that might miss somebody who hasn't enrolled in our programs yet. But if they've enrolled in any of our programs, we could still do a communication.
Would probably be a good representation.
Be a pretty good representation.
And then they'd be able to get word to others as well.
See, that's the whole thing is you, you want to try to get the people who either haven't enrolled because they, maybe their children weren't of the appropriate age or didn't know about the camps or didn't like what they had heard. But now that we're thinking about making changes, maybe they would show some interest. But you gotta get them here.
Or liked what we did.
And find out, okay, what are you concerned about? And let's talk money. You know, there's always a price point at which people say, no, thank you.
Right, and I, and I think the other, and I think.
She did ask.
And I think the other thing to really consider, you know, as, as we're looking at that. And yeah, you have to know, would you be willing to pay for these changes and what the price point is? But at the same time, we have a group of people that have been consistently sending their children. When I see the, when I see the responses, a lot of the concerns have to do more with the organization than anything else and communication, you know, from, from the camp to the parents themselves. But I mean, this is a camp that is growing in numbers. And so people are having a good time. They're re-enrolling. They're bringing their friends. You know, and so while it's, I, I'm just saying that I, that yes, it's good to hear from people who aren't enrolling and why they're not enrolling. But to me, I want to know how we can make this experience better so that word of mouth continues to grow the program. Because that's who's already using it.
And the other policy question is, how much of the cost is the board looking to recover in this type of a program? That's a separate policy question.
Right, and that's really our question that we're asking.
And I'm gonna keep going. This one quick thing. Suppose we separated the programs where the younger children would be in a different place, like.
Be tough.
It'd be tough. I just something, I probably can't, the logistics for this year is probably impossible. But like younger kids at the school and the older kids at the Crawford.
The cost for the school is gonna be for their staff to be there, so if they have to be there anyhow.
So, okay, okay.
Go to the school.
Okay, so you're gonna, we'll get, we'll get a number from the school and see what the cost is, right?
And we do have to also keep that in mind that we are in late November. We're about to be in December. And we're talking about the possibility of material changes to the camp itself before it starts in June.
That's seven months. I think that's a lot, personally, I think that's a lot of time. And I, we've tried to address these issues before. And we've put them off, and now there's, there's time.
I think we also need to hear from staff. We need to hear from the rec committee.
And the school.
We need to know from, I mean, maybe we can get.
Yeah, first to find out what they want. They may come back with 60 grand.
The school would even entertain that.
Well, they would for a fee. And the question is what the fee is.
We know what they asked, we know what they wanted a few years ago. We, we have to re-ask it again and see where it is.
To see, let's re-ask to get that as more information. So I would ask, I would ask, we're not just yelling things from here, please, okay? Yes, you're welcome to come up and say something.
I did ask about that, because I, I was, I was interested like what the cost is now. I will say, other schools like Scarsdale don't charge as much because they made a deal that like they did the cleaning, like they didn't have to hire extra custodians and stuff. But our custodians are 12 months. So that being said, the math I came up with, I think they told me somewhere around $30,000 for, which I, I'm not sure it came from, you have stuff to worry about. But I did the math of like all the 115 kids, it's like $200 more a kid. And I'm just saying, the parents I spoke to were like, oh. And by the way, this is before the deficit and all that stuff. But every parent I spoke to, I spoke to like 20 parents, were like, $200 more a kid to have my kid at the elementary school? Yes, please. Like, so I, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I didn't get a huge consensus of everybody. But I'm saying like, it is a cost, but I do think if you sent a survey out and asked parents, would you be willing to pay X amount more to have it in this location? I think you would get a lot of parents saying yes. And plus, other parents that like me, they're like, I'm not putting my kids in the town park. I could be wrong, but I also will say, I also wonder about the fees, honestly. Because I will say, like, we're helping, we work together, you know, we work together. School and, and town should be working together. And I've always been kind of shocked, but I've always been sad that I'm like, why is it such a separate entity, right? Like, we're such a small community. Why does it seem as like, this is a town, this is a school? The rec seems to work really well there after school. It's a great program. I know because my students attend and I, I stay late and I get to watch them play. And I, I just wish that could maybe continue all year. But I will say, I did ask about the fees, because I, obviously, if we're talking like 1,000 to 1,000 more kids, it's a problem. But I did ask, so. And I'm also, and I did speak to very recently Colin and board members. And they did say that they would be more than willing to. And they did say that they would be more than willing to entertain it, being the rec. But I, I don't really know how to do that. I've emailed Bert. I haven't heard. And I speak to Rocco every day, but he says he has no say. So that's why.
No, you're, you're at the right location.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, let's get this extra information. Let's see where we stand. I mean, we may have to have a special meeting at some point.
As long as it's not on December sixth, that's fine.
Oh, God, no, no, it will not be.
At Pyebridge Park on sixth.
I can guarantee it will not be on December sixth. That day is already just way too far. And I don't know how quickly we're going to be able to get this information and whether we're going to be able, I mean, it's, or it's December on Sunday. So.
We'll do our best.
Yeah. So, all right, anything else to add for this con, I don't think we're, I mean, as I said, I mean, there's.
No, I'm thrilled.
Way too many questions out there and not enough information really to make. I don't feel there's enough information to make a decision on right now.
Certainly.
So why don't we, why don't we get that other information? We'll take it from there, Chris. Once we get that other information, it may just be that this is a conversation that we have on the tenth with a possible, you know.
If the board can do it earlier, you maybe can even start the meeting an hour or hour and a half earlier and just do it.
And do a special joint meeting at that time.
The works, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a thought, if people are worried about scheduling.
Yeah, let's, let's think about it over, you know, the weekend, the holiday weekend here. And, you know, I'm sure we'll talk during the week, but we'll, we'll talk, you know, early next week to see what we think. And I'll certainly, you know, reach out to board members just to see what we think are the best options for next step. Meeting, you know, a special meeting, having it as on a regular meeting. I mean, obviously, you know, something.
I think having the information that's aligned would be great.
And again, my personal opinion is, you know, I think it's worth looking into this information to see. I still stand by the fact that I think that this should be subsidized by the village to provide an affordable camp option. I think we've had a very good success rate at our current location. We've had a very successful camp. We certainly, I don't think have had any issues regarding safety of children during any of that time. And so it's, but it's always good to look at other options and get as much information as we can to then try and come to a decision as a board because it really is a board decision.
I was going to say, absent more information, there's no point in having a meeting.
Right, right. And that's, that's really, that's really the question is, and it's, it's, and again, it's tough timing because, you know, a lot of municipalities, you know, they're, they're not going to be doing much business tomorrow and certainly not Thursday, Friday or over the weekend. So it's really.
I made a lot of calls to different municipalities in the last two days and I got them. And when I was finishing my list today, most people were not there and I guarantee you, they will not be there tomorrow.
Won't be there tomorrow, right.
I, I personally think that the, the most important issue that we're going to face and think about is whether or not the school will be available and at what cost. Because I think that really will help us figure out whether we can change it in time for June. And the cost factor is always a cost factor. So that way we'll know that number. And as far as subsidies, it's different when you're paying half the amount than if you're making up a small amount. So I just want you to go through the numbers also.
Right. Yeah, and we'll certainly go through the numbers. I mean, to me, I mean, we came into this conversation two weeks ago, basically saying, we're looking at the fees. You know, this conversation keeps expanding.
Yeah.
And because if we're talking location now, that's an expansion on the conversation. And I honestly don't see us finding an answer to that in time for a brochure, certainly. And if this case, conversation continues into February, which it very well may, then we're probably looking at twenty-six. So it may even be, you know, I mean, this is, this is not, I don't want to rush to any decision. You know, especially when we have a lot of information already with us that is very positive about the camp. And I want to make that clear that we have some, there are clearly some issues in the camp. A lot of them have to do with communication. But overwhelmingly, from the surveys, people are having a positive experience at the camp. And so I don't want to rush into a decision, changing things. You know, just for the sake of doing it at, by a certain time.
You want it to be the right decision, whether it be this year or a future year, because my other concern would be if it didn't work out or you weren't comfortable and you said, well, I don't think you can be able to just give it a try over at the other school. Because I think that my guess is the town will fill that space up pretty quickly in the summer with somebody renting that we currently don't charge for. So, you know, I know that that's always an issue, but they always reserve it for us, but that's a potential. So you want it to be the right decision, whether it be this summer or a future summer. But you want to be sure that's the right place for us to go and at the right place.
And we need to hear from staff and we need to hear from the rec committee and we need to hear from, from participants of the program.
Right. How are we outreach, conducting our outreach to those residents, the ones that don't attend now and the ones that attend? How are you going to do that? Are you going to have a survey or do you want them to just come to the meeting?
Well, if you're, if the board has a special meeting on this topic, we would know, the typical ways we would do it is we would do it through the rec group, which is the, anyone who's enrolled, we could do it to the, we could do anything we want. We could do it just to the people in the program, but in this case, I would say you do it to anybody who signed up in our programs, which would, any program at all. So this way we capture.
That's a huge capture, yeah.
But then, but you're, if you're trying to reach those that aren't in the program, that's the way to do it. The only group that you'd be missing would be those that haven't enrolled in any of our programs. But there's other ways. There's Facebook and the residence page and other ways that you can get that information out.
Right. Great. Sounds wonderful. Thank you so much. You too. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other comments from the public?
Come on, Eric. Come on, Eric.
Seeing none. The next meeting of the Board of Trustees, the last meeting of the year for the Board of Trustees will be our next meeting on December tenth, twenty twenty-four. I want to wish everyone on this day, up here at this day, as you as well, Eric, as well as anyone at home listening, to have a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. Good night.
You as well.
Good night. Thank you.
Everybody have a good holiday.
Happy Thanksgiving.